It is now six thirty. Let me determination we have a quorum. Mr. Eduardo Ramirez.
Present.
Ms. Judith Solis.
Present.
Dr. B.
Yeah.
Mr. Elsar Velazquez.
Present.
And myself, Daniel Garcia, is present as well. We do have a quorum. The pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in its will, in its routine and justice for all.
Thank you. Section three approval of minutes for the regular board meeting of November fourteenth, twenty seventeen, the special board meeting of November sixteenth, twenty seventeen. Do we have a motion of approval minutes?
I move.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Public forum. Item one, recognition. Maria Elizabeth Garcia, first grader, first grader from Darío, Dr. Mario E. Ramirez Elementary, Laura Estrada, fifth grader from Ringo Elementary. And then we also have the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen Imagine National Beacon School, La Unión Elementary.
Okay, so I'm gonna break with protocol and do something different. Oh, it's so nice to be on this side. Okay. So, I wanted to recognize two young ladies. We have young Mariana here, who is from Dr. Mario Ramirez Elementary, and young Laura here from Ringo Elementary, and their families are here and their principals are here, I see as well. And something very special happened last month. Every year, I volunteer for Relay for Life. It's a beautiful event. Our schools always have outstanding participation, and this year, we had it the week that the Thanksgiving holiday started, and I thought, oh, we're not gonna have anybody show up. Oh, my gosh. The schools showed up, their principals, the staff. It was absolutely beautiful. And many of them took their cheer teams. And I've been volunteering with Relay for ten years. I've been emceeing it, I'm the emcee, for like the past five years. And this is the first year that we did something very special, very unique. We went ahead and thought, okay, we're gonna have stylists, also from the district, on hand, and if anybody would like to donate hair for a very good cause, we're gonna go ahead and ask for volunteers. And I thought, oh, when I read it and the team told us about it, I thought, oh, I wonder who's gonna volunteer? I thought, that'd be tough. I mean, most of us are very vain about our hair. And so, I explained that we would be taking donations, people would have to donate at least eight inches of their hair, and that the hair would be donated to American Cancer Society from the Rio Grande Valley to make wigs for anybody battling cancer here in the valley who might not be able to afford one. And I was just beyond moved when these two young ladies stepped up with their mothers, and each of them told me, I would like to donate my hair. And I was, I was so moved, because I thought, this is the caliber of students that we have at RGCC ISD. And I wanted to recognize them here today. So, I have certificates, and I wanted them to take a picture with the board, and I just wanted for everyone to see these young ladies and what a beautiful example of generosity and community mindedness they are. So, thank you, Laura, and thank you, Mariana. You wanna go take a picture with them? Yes? Okay. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Garcia, board president, Mr. Garcia, superintendent of schools, board members, and audience present. Each year, Imagine Learning recognizes exemplary partners who have displayed excellence and consistency in their use of the Imagine Learning program. Schools and districts alike are recognized for their dedication to the use of the software for educating students with Spanish and English language and literacy. The customer recognition program, Imagination, not only highlights schools that have demonstrated outstanding use of Imagine Learning, but also recognizes schools that demonstrate a high level of innovation. This prestigious award is presented to schools that have used the program regularly throughout the school year according to Imagine Learning's usage recommendations. These recommendations are suggested so that, so that all students attain the maximum results for the, from the program. Regular use of Imagine Learning has been shown to lead to impressive gains on high stakes assessments, including state English language development and language arts exams. Many schools recognized by the Imagination Program have also implemented innovative practices like rearranging computer lab schedules or starting before or after school programs to achieve consistent use of Imagine Learning. Imagine Learning representatives may nominate exemplary schools for the Beacon School Award after considering factors such as usage, implementation, innovation, and effective partnerships. This year, sixty-three Beacon Schools were chosen throughout the nation. And this evening, we are very proud to present the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen Imagine Learning Beacon Award to La Unión Elementary School, Principal, Mrs. Teresa Ariasola.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item two, announcement of board members' training required by TASB Policy, BBD, legal, board member training orientation. Or presentation. Daniel J. Garcia exceeded required training. Eduardo Eri Ramirez exceeded required training. Judith Amanda Solis exceeded required training. Dr.
I did not do that on purpose, I'm sorry.
Daria, Dr. B. Babeno exceeded board, exceeded board member training. Dr. Norberto Cantú Jr. exceeded required training. Letizia O. López exceeded required training. Elsar Velazquez Jr. exceeded required training. Item three, consider and take possible action on travel requests from Rio High School. We have a motion, item three.
If there's no presentation, I would move to approve it.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item four, consider and take possible action on donations to RGCC ISD.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, superintendent. The following donations have been received by the district. Gruya High School received one hundred dollars from Terry Staker. Gruya High School, one hundred and fifty dollars from the Law Office of Marty Garcia. Gruya High School, one hundred dollars, Angie Staker. Gruya High School, one hundred and fifty dollars, the Law Office of Judith Solis. Gruya High School, one hundred and fifty dollars from the Law Office of Reno Gonzales. Gruya High School, five hundred dollars from Star Home Health. Gruya High School, two hundred dollars from J.F. Communications. Gruya High School, one hundred dollars, Sound Investments. Gruya High School, one hundred dollars, E&amp;A Home Builders. Gruya High School, seventy-five dollars from Starr County Town Choir. Gruya High School, fifty dollars from R&amp;R Coalition Center. Gruya High School, fifty dollars from Raoul's Income Tax Service. Rio High School, Mariachi Cascabel, two hundred dollars from Antanke Water Supply. And Rio High School, Mariachi Cascabel, fifty dollars from Elsa State Bank. And all of these donations total one thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. And administration recommends approval of the donations.
Do we have a motion, item four?
I move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Ramirez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item five, consider and take possible action on Starr County appraisal district payment schedule for twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen.
Item number five, the Starr County appraisal district total allocation for the school year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen is five hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars and ninety-nine cents. And installments of one hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars and eight hundred and eight dollars, I'm sorry, for each quarter are due on the months of December, March, June, and September. Administration recommends approval of the payment schedule for this school year.
We have a motion, item five.
I move.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item six, consider and take possible action on budget amendment number twenty eighteen dash one.
Budget amendment two thousand eighteen dash one. The amendment is prepared to revise the current budget, and revision strict expenditures are presented for your review and approval. Administration recommends approval of budget amendment two thousand eighteen dash one.
Is any, just questions? Do we have a motion, item six?
I move.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item seven, consider and take possible action on tax refunds for the month of November twenty seventeen.
Item number seven, tax refunds for November two thousand seventeen totaled six thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars and thirty-six cents. And attached is the summary of the refunds. Administration recommends approval.
Do we have a motion, item seven?
I move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item eight, consider and take possible action on requisitions, five thousand over in a twelve-month aggregate.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Garcia. We do have a requisition for your consideration on page seventy-one of your agenda. All these requisitions have funding available for those requests. I don't know if you have any questions at all. There's, it's all on that one page.
Do we have a motion, item eight?
I move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item nine.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item nine, consider and take possible action on request for permission to purchase time clock for Transportation Department.
Good evening, Board President, members of the board, Mr. Garcia and everybody in attendance. We're asking for the permission to request to see we can purchase the opportunity to have time clocks. One would be stationed at the substation, the other one would be here at the fort, and of course, it would be able to be able to manage on the times and time in and times out whenever these individuals that we have.
Discussion, item nine. Do we have a motion, item nine?
I move.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item ten, consider and take possible action on request for permission to purchase RTM fleet management software system for Transportation Department.
Yes, this is a request for, to purchase this fleet management. This would be able to track all systems in regards to oil changes, every part being coming in, every, everything tracked from every invoice, every P.O., to be able to track, to see every single vehicle, to see where we're at with it, at the beginning, to start, to end, on there. This will be able to manage all these systems in regard, so we may be also able to attend in regards to everything we need to turn into T.E.A. as well.
Do we have a motion, item ten?
I move to approve this item.
We have a motion by Dr. B. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item eleven, consider and take possible action on proposal for teacher training by Rogelio Gomez Jr., consultant DBA Foundation in Teaching.
Good evening, Mr. Daniel Garcia, Board President, members of the board, Mr. Garcia, Superintendent of Schools, and community members. As observed from the student non-mastery percentages in eighth grade social studies and the Texas Accountability Intervention System, the district has identified eighth grade social studies as an area of immediate concern. In an effort to provide every opportunity for student success, we are presenting the following proposal for social studies. The social studies proposal includes twelve days, twelve days of consultant work through Rogelio Gomez Jr. Foundations in Teaching. The total cost is twenty-one thousand, six hundred dollars. It entails analysis of social studies scope and sequence through the different eras. It is train, and also involves exploring social studies content and academic vocabulary. There are twelve days, and it's for all three middle schools. The curriculum and instruction department is recommending approval. There is funding available through the Rural and Low Income Grant two seventy. We recommend approval.
Questions? Do we have a motion, item eleven?
I move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
I too.
Opposed.
Item twelve, consider and take possible action on writing proposals.
Again, as observed through the student non-mastery percentages in English Language Arts and End of Course, and again, the Texas Accountability System, the district has also identified English Language Arts as an area of concern in fourth grade, seventh grade, and English one and English two. The district requests approval for the writing proposals. There are two different proposals, one for high school, English one and English two, and then there's a separate proposal that is attached, and that is for fourth grade writing and seventh grade writing. The high school English proposal consists of a total budget of approximately eight thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars beginning December and ending the month of March. And the fourth and seventh grade writing proposals consist of working with all elementary schools and all of the middle schools, and that is approximately three, thirty-three thousand, four hundred dollars. For a grand total for all writing proposals for the district, approximately forty-two thousand dollars. Again, there is funding available through the Rural and Low Income Grant. The curriculum and instruction department recommends approval.
Do we have a motion, an item twelve? We have a motion by Mr. Velazquez. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item thirteen, consider and take possible action on proposal for staff development by Dr. Mike Longoria, AKA Dr. Mike.
Good evening, again. Dr. Mike's innovative and original approach to integrating music and movement in the classroom will allow you to experience the joy and excitement it brings to education while developing muscles in young brains. This form of teaching not only makes learning fun, fun, but more importantly, it meets the needs of all children. Furthermore, research supports the move, that movement is the preferred style of learning for fidgety, reactive, and restless children. Dr. Max, Dr. Mike's trainings lead to excitement, motivation, and make teachers aware of the importance of integrating music and movement throughout their instruction for the student's cognitive, physical, mental, social, and academic benefit. This form of teaching not only complements brain-based teaching, which promotes accelerated learning and longer retention while bringing jo, while bringing joy to education. Dr. Mike has a supplemental program that will allow the pre-K and kinder teachers to teach the children movement music, which is something they have been asking for. In doing research, you know, his, his trainings have been, have very high ratings. So, this evening, as presented in curriculum meeting, we recommend approval. The total cost is twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty. That includes a one full day of training, and funding is available through Title III, which is bilingual.
Do we have a motion, item thirteen?
I move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item fourteen, consider and take possible action on request for permission to purchase second grade Spanish science teacher-created materials.
As we are getting ready to prepare for the implementation of dual language in second grade, we want to start getting ready with materials that they will need to supplement that implementation. And so, we're thinking already ahead for second grade, and that would be Spanish materials that we would be purchasing. The total cost for that will be thirty thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars. And we have bilingual funds available, one ninety-nine for that. And as presented at curriculum, we recommend approval.
Do we have a motion, item fourteen?
I move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Velazquez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item fifteen, consider and take possible action on request for permission to participate in the one twenty-three Andres Student Assemblies and Family Engagement Concert.
Andres one-two-three, or one-two-three Andres is a musician, is a Colombian singer that has developed a music for children. We got to see him when we went to La Cuesta in New Mexico. And in doing research about his presentations, several districts here in the valley have brought him to present, especially to the parents, because he has a parental engagement concert that he provides along with visiting schools and presenting his program through using musical instruments and developing the Spanish and the English vocabulary through visiting different countries in Latin America. And so, he exposes the kids to all of that. And so, that's a way of promoting also history or social studies vocabulary. And in contacting him, and like I said, investigating, Harlingen has brought him before, Harlingen ISD, and they had, he was, he has been able to bring up to three thousand parents to his concert. And so, he's charging us for ten elementary assemblies, that is visiting every elementary and presenting his program for fifty minutes, pre-K through second grade, and then doing a concert at night, using here the auditorium. Total cost is eight thousand, five hundred. And for the first one hundred parents that go, we will also give them a free CD. He has also won a Latin Grammy for children's music. And as presented at curriculum meeting, we recommend approval. We do have funding available through two sixty-three and one ninety-nine. And by bringing him, we'll also be in compliance with Title III, the parental component engagement.
All right. Do we have a motion, an item fifteen?
I move.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Velazquez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item sixteen, consider and take possible action on Region Seven Education Service Center, DMAC, LPAC online software license agreement.
For the past few months, we've been looking, you know, looking at different companies, trying to find a company that would offer an LPAC online program that can meet our needs. And just recently, DMAC, which we already have that company here in the district, and purchase, actually, they launched a new component for the LPAC online. And after looking at it and reviewing it, and the fact that we already have it, and in comparison to other companies, the price is five thousand, six hundred dollars, and that would include all the campuses. And we do have available money through one ninety-nine. And as presented at curriculum, we do recommend approval. And beginning in January, we would be providing training and moving online with the LPAC.
Do we have a motion, an item seventeen? No, sixteen, sorry. Item sixteen.
How much, what was the price on that?
The price is five thousand, six hundred dollars.
I think it's a sixty-four hundred here.
Yeah. No? That's what it said?
It's four hundred dollars per, four hundred dollars per school. We have seventeen campuses.
I would move to approve the item at the correct price, to be at fifty-six hundred or sixty-four hundred.
All right. We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second with the corrected price.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item seventeen, consider and take possible action on RGV Lead Service Agreement for the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school year.
RGV Lead Service Agreement is through Career and Technology, through Mrs. Adelina Villarreal's program. Mrs. Adelina Villarreal is at Gruya High School right now. She has her last, one of her last ACE meetings for, for this evening. In this agreement, RGV Lead will provide quarterly regional pre-K through sixteen council and counselors network meetings to facilitate sharing between and among public schools, colleges, and universities to support college readiness and career preparation, and successful transitions from education to the workforce. Annually, also, with this agreement, there will be updated reports and support for the use of facilities for continuous improvement in college and career advisement and preparation systems. And RGV, with this particular agreement, scholars will encourage students to acquire the necessary skills for success in post-secondary education. There is funding available through the Career and Technology Program. The total cost for this particular agreement is six thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars. And the curriculum department respectfully requests approval of the agreement between RGV Lead Services and the district.
Do we have a motion, item seventeen?
I move to accept this item.
We have a motion by Dr. B. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Velazquez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item eighteen, consider and take possible action on high school credit by exams.
Good evening, Mr. Garcia, Board President, members of the board, Mr. Garcia, Superintendent, and everyone in attendance. As per district policy, the curriculum and instruction department has verified the development of nineteen credit by exams in all core areas for Rio Grande City High School, the Preparatory for Early College, and Gruya High School. The credit by exam is a credit recovery option for students to obtain credit. We did have fifteen teachers from the district develop these exams, and you have an attachment there of which teacher developed which test. There was, there is nineteen courses, but there is a first semester exam and a second semester exam. So, that is the amount of exams we have verified. So, the curriculum and instruction department respectfully requests approval of these exams in order to afford our students an additional credit recovery option. Funding is available through General Funds one ninety-nine, and the total cost of that is seven thousand, two hundred. So, we respectfully request your approval.
Do we have a motion, item eighteen?
I move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item nineteen, consider and take possible action on Curse Will, three thousand district-wide subscription for the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school year.
Good evening, Board President, members of the board, Mr. Garcia, and ladies and gentlemen. Curse Will three thousand is an integrated scan and read software program that provides multisensory access to reading material with powerful tools for reading, writing, test-taking, and learning. This software turns any curriculum material into an interactive digital format. We are asking approval. It is eleven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight, and funding source will be coming from SCE one ninety-nine.
Do we have a motion on item nineteen?
I move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item twenty, consider and take possible action on request for permission to purchase the Edgenuity online program for the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school year.
As presented before Board Committee on Thursday, November ninth, federal programs is respectfully requesting the approval of Edgenuity, an online learning program that will be utilized by students in the three high schools, Chance to Be, and the Alternative Center. This online program offers an extensive library of core courses and electives for credit recovery opportunities, as well as online assistance for blended learning that includes advanced placement courses, support, and virtual learning, as well as state and national test preparation, college readiness courses that include STAR, and of course, ACT, SAT, GED, and TSI. As requested by the three high school principals, Edgenuity will offer an unlimited number of site licenses to make learning opportunities available to all students and two staff development days, one that took place November thirtieth, and the second one coming up January the eighth. The total cost of this program is fifty-six thousand, fifty, with the price being prorated effective December first through June the thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. Total cost is forty-nine thousand, seven fifty, and funding will come from two eighty-nine, Title IV Student Support and Academic Enrichment Grant.
I was gonna, and you said it was like prorating, but that was my question.
Okay.
Why, why are we, I guess, and that's for the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school year, but why are we buying it mid?
Previously, we had a
Previously, we had a program called Odysseyware, and it ended December first.
Oh, okay.
So we had to revisit several companies, and we looked at three different companies to see what they had to offer. And this particular company was chosen by the principals as the one that they wanted to, to continue, so we prorated, making sure that December, and it ends this school year, and then we'll make a full evaluation and make a new recommendation for the next school year.
Do we have a motion, item twenty?
I move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Velázquez, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything on reports? It is now seven PM, we'll be heading to closed session under the authority of the Texas Government Code Section five-five-one point oh-seven-one. Yeah, it is now eight, eight-twenty-three, and we're out of executive. Item A, there requires no action. Item B, do we have a motion, item B?
I move, we approve item B as discussed in our executive session.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramírez, do we have a second?
I second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item C, do we have a motion, item C?
I move that we approve item C as discussed in our executive session.
Item C, do we have a motion, we have a motion by Mr. Ramírez, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item D, requires no action. And item E, do we have a motion, item E?
I move that we approve item E as discussed in our executive session.
We have a motion, item E, do we have a second, item E?
Second.
All in, we have a, a motion, a second by Ms. Solis, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. And, that's it. And motion for adjournment, do we have a motion for, we have a motion by Ms. Solis, do we have a second?
Second.
We, uh, meeting, it is eight-twenty-five, meeting is now adjourned.